All right. Good evening, everyone. It is June 3rd and this is the regular board meeting for Town of Anger. Hereby call this meeting to order. Tonight, we're going to be joined by the wonderful Shelby Blackman, who is going to lead us in pledge and invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Lord, thank you for bringing us together tonight. Thank you for the beautiful day you gave us. And Lord, I thank you every day for allowing me to have a job that I truly enjoy going to. As this meeting goes on tonight, be with each commissioner, the mayor, our town attorney, and our town manager. Be with them tonight and may not their will, but your will be done in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Blackman. If you don't already know her, she is the head of the Anger Chamber of Commerce. So, all right. We've got short agenda page-wise, but a lot of substance in it. So, we're going to try to move through it as quickly as we can. Consent agenda, we've all seen the consent agenda for tonight. It is a couple of minutes and then a voluntary annexation, just to direct the town clerk to investigate the sufficiency of it. Is there any discussion about consent agenda item?
I'm going to make a motion to amend the agenda to include police station project funding under new business.
That's true. I forgot to do the agenda. All right. So, new business number seven is proposed, seven. All right, any other changes to the agenda? Well, let's take a vote on her motion to amend it, right? All those in favor, raise your right hand. That's unanimous. Any other amendments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
Motion to approve the amended agenda.
All right. All those in favor, raise your right hand. That's unanimous. Now, we'll move on to consent agenda. Forgive me. Minutes and annexation petition. Any discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
I make a motion to approve your freezing petition.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That's unanimous. All right, it is the first meeting of the month, which means we have public comment. Anyone may speak on any issue. If you want to speak at a public hearing, which we do have a little bit later, please wait until that public hearing has been opened. Before speaking, please state your name and address. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. And as general rule, we won't respond typically right away to a comment, though we may direct you to a member of town staff. We have got three people signed up for tonight, so we'll go down the list. First, I have Kimberly Van Beck, who would like to speak about the Anger Public Library. Good evening.
Good evening.
If you don't mind, guys, speak right into that microphone.
Sure, good evening. As you stated, my name is Kimberly Van Beck. I am the current director of the Harnett County Public Library System. And after comments were made before this board at the last session, I'm here today to publicly reassure the citizens of Anger that the Anger Public Library does in fact exist and that the library is thriving. I would like to take just a few minutes of your time this evening to share how our library is making a tangible difference in your community and particularly how we are doing those things through our early literacy initiatives and robust public programming. Let me begin with early literacy. Research tells us that a child's experiences in the first five years are critical to their lifelong ability to learn. At Anger Public Library, we have made early literacy a cornerstone of our mission. Through programs like Toddler and Preschool Storytime and 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten, we're not just reading to children, but we're giving parents and caregivers the tools that they need to become their child's first and best teacher. Beyond early literacy, our public programming continues to be a vital part of the Anger community. From STEM workshops, book clubs, and cultural events, we are serving all ages, all backgrounds, and all interests. This year, Anger Public Library has hosted over 170 programs for the citizens of Anger, and they have had over 400 attendees. We also have 2,400 citizens entering the doors of the public library every month. That is an average of 24,800 citizens that use the public library each year. This is a 15% increase from the year before, and we do not anticipate the increase to stop. These programs that we provide the citizens of Anger aren't just feel-good programs, but they have measurable impacts. Caregivers report stronger engagement in reading at home, and we're preparing students to arrive at school with foundational skills in place, skills that improve their chance of long-term academic success. Anger Public Library is also working intentionally to reach underserved populations, partnering with local schools and senior centers to deliver library services outside of these walls. Whether it's outreach storytime or tech classes for older adults, these programs are bridging gaps in access, education, and opportunities. In short, Anger Public Library is not just a place to check out books. It's a platform for growth, connection, and lifelong learning for the citizens of Anger. You cannot have community without community spaces, and the Anger Public Library is the community hub of this town. Thank you for your continued support of our mission. Anger Public Library plans to keep innovating and expanding to meet the evolving needs of your community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, we have Fran Bishop. Topic of concern, ABC store audit. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Fran Bishop. For the time right now, I live at 98 Buddy Campbell Court, close to my house. I will be leaving Anger this month, but one more day as a citizen. I'm going to come to you with a couple of things. Don't have any prepared speeches or anything. Just wanted to point out a couple of things. Okay, so, hi to all of you. I didn't read you. Nice to see you again. First thing I have, I left the Anger Board in January. That's widely known, and the reasons I left is also widely known, but it's being misrepresented. But I'm going to point out one thing. They're 10 months into their current year budget. They're at 92% of their budget. In order to make their budget, they're going to need to do over $508,000 over the next June and May, which are, you know, that's not going to happen. Just saying. We haven't had a budget revision. I've asked for it. Go back and listen to the meeting minutes. Every single month, I ask them to revise their budget. They didn't do it. They may do it tonight. We'll see. Interestingly enough, but that being said, they're on track to make around probably close to $4 million this year. They've got over $800,000 in the bank right now. And they're asking you tonight to allow them to keep all of that money so they can expand to another location. They're currently hemorrhaging cash. Their payroll, you'll see in the audit report. I'm not going to go into it. He'll go into the details. Payroll is too high for the amount of volume. Okay? They haven't lowered it. They've increased it. The general manager that just quit, they've gotten three raises in less than a year. That's not how you run a business. Okay? June of 2024, I requested that they do an audit of the complete audit of the inventory. Once again, at every meeting, I asked, can I get an update on how the audit's going? Can I get an update on how the audit's going? Months later, I finally get the audit, and we were 79 bottles missing. Okay? That's a lot. That's a lot of bottles missing. No explanation. We just wrote it off. Started all over, said new general manager, start with a clean slate. There has not been a single audit reported since then. Whether they're doing it or not, I don't know. They're supposed to be doing it. Every time I asked about it, I was told no. So, those are the reasons, when you talk about cash management, those are part of my issues. You'll hear a lot about the audit tonight, but if you look at the last year, every single month, you can go on the NCABC and get this printout for the whole state of all the stores and how they compare to last year. Every single month, we have less sales than we did the same month last year. Every single month. That's disturbing. So, to me, before you guys vote to let them keep more cash that they're not managing well, you might ought to think about, it's not coming back to the town, which is what the town charter says. It's supposed to come back to the town. If they're keeping it, it's not coming back to the town. My time's up. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. Next, I have Mr. Galen Bishop.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Galen Bishop. I live at 98 Buddy Campbell Court. Excuse me. And I'd like to talk about the ABC Board's request tonight to start accumulating more funds than they have been recently. The Anger ABC Board is considering a change in distribution practices to begin retaining the lowest amount of their profits allowed by statute in preparation for an indeterminate capital project. I believe this should be opposed until such time as they present some concrete evidence of the benefits of the capital project. This concrete evidence should include what the project would be, what it would cost, and what are the projected outcomes from the project. Blindly keeping money with no plans for how it will be used or how those expenditures will benefit the town is foolish and typical government practice. If your 10-year-old came to you and instead of asking for a bicycle, asked for $4 million to build a strip center, you would certainly ask him to provide some evidence of planning that indicates the expenditure would be a good one. Our 10-year-old is asking for money, and they've given no indication that they put any thought into it other than to just collect it. What they have provided is some evidence that they aren't that good at managing expenses. If you look at the audit that's going to be presented tonight and the comparison of salary expenditures from the stores chosen as comparable to ours, you can see that ours is quite a bit higher than the others. I have seen this council have difficulty saying no to requests for increasing expenditures, especially salary increases, which is very disappointing. One of the main problems the Town of Anger suffers from is a malignant family exercising malevolent influence on many of the town's governmental activities. This evil influence continues with the puppet master connecting New Strings to the ABC Commission recently. Of all the bad characteristics of this group's influences, I think the worst is their regard of public monies as their own personal piggy bank. From using them half a million at a time for beautification of projects that only benefits them, to giving increases in salaries specifically to benefit their own family, they just don't regard our monies as sacred. They regard it as something to be looted for their own desires. Although it is difficult, I would encourage everyone to keep up the good fight in opposing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. All right, that's all who have signed up. Is there anyone else here who would like to make a public comment before we move on? All right. Moving on to presentations. On my agenda, I have a presentation from Bobbit about the new police station first.
I'm Andy Speck with Bobbit Construction. We've been working diligently over the last year designing a new police station, and we thought we would show a wonderful virtual tour of this station. I just want to point out, I'm joined by our design partners from Davis Kane, Bradley McClung, and Ryan Malat. And Ryan put this together, so this is his handiwork. Plans are currently in with the Planning Department for review right now and approval. And we are wrapping up the final estimate right now, and we are ready to mobilize mid to late summer, whenever we can get all of our other balls in the air to line and say go.
Yeah.
So, that was it.
Exciting. Any questions for them while we've got them here? Thank you very much. We appreciate it. All right, we've got another presentation, the ABC Board Performance Audit Report. Mr. Edwin Strickland.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you all for letting me come up here tonight. I have a lot of professional strengths, but you're about to find out, public speaking is not one of them. Fortunately, it's not a major player in my life. I came and visited your board, the Anger ABC Board, in April and came and visited a board meeting, I believe, early May, and was asked again by the mayor pro tem to come and just present my findings from that visit. Just to tell you about myself, I've been with the ABC Commission for a pretty good amount of time, about 13 years, but the first 12 I spent as an auditor with mixed auditor and supervisor with the mixed beverage, which is your restaurants and bars. So, I'm not brand spanking new. I've been doing this for maybe a year now, but I don't feel like I'm an expert at my current duties. I'm working towards that. As a regulatory agency, we have three major aspects that we look at when visiting boards. First one is solvency, which is a non-issue for you on any level. You're generally able to pay your bills, got working capital buildup, and have a positive net profit. The second is performance standards, which is what I'll kind of focus on tonight. And then the last part is compliance, which is more or less just checking boxes, and we have a lot of boxes that can be checked. Probably the most important performance standard is profit percent to sales ratio. For your board, last year, it was 12.54%. That is very high in the ABC universe. What it means in kind of plain Jane terms, every hundred bucks that goes through your cash register, you get to hang on to about $12.54 that can then be returned to the city and other beneficiaries, or can be used for things that you may hear later on tonight. Sales last year, 4.2, almost 4.3 million, 2% increase from the previous year. Sales over the last five years have increased about 21%. Pretty much every ABC board can say that in the state. COVID was good to some of the ABC stores, but 21% is really solid, and you were sitting pretty five years ago to begin with. Just for fun, that breaks down to about $816 per resident, so that's how much each of your town spends on alcohol. I would assume you get some out-of-town business. Second, most important performance standard is operating cost ratio. This is the percent of your gross profits that you're using to operate the system, to pay the light bill, pay the salaries, everything you can think of that's part of running a business. .53, the standard is .73, so you are well below the standard. If I didn't say so, with the first performance standard, 6.5% is the standard, so you have almost not quite doubled that. Again, that's really high in the ABC universe. You may not be high if you were a hat shop or a mixed beverage that I'm more familiar with, but that's very high. I mean, you're on the first page if you were to run a report in the, out of 171 boards, probably in the top 20-some, top 25, I might not say. A little over $5 million in income last year, again, really strong. That's up almost to over $200,000 from the previous year. A lot of competition, fair amount of competition within a 20-mile radius, other boards with stores, Littleton Dunn, Wake County, and Johnston County. A little bit of a higher unemployment rate in Harnett County. I don't know how much that affects frequency of ABC purchases. I suspect it affects what people are purchasing. We have nine mixed beverage accounts. Mixed beverage is a big part of the ABC universe. Nine accounts isn't a real high number, but you're able to generate not quite 5% of your sales from that, so it means your board's personnel have been doing a great job servicing the accounts they have. The inventory turnover, how many times theoretically inventory runs through your system? The goal is five. You're at about four and a half, which is a little bit less than the goal, but that's kind of the norm through the industry. There's a lot of variables to that, and I won't bore you too much with them, but that's not in a bad place. You're in a good place inventory turnover-wise. Some of the expenses, $49.3, cost of goods is very low. Just to put that in perspective, the previous year, you were at 55%. I suspect there's a little bit of back and forth on that, just kind of playing catch-up. Generally, with fixed costs and, you know, fixed costs and fixed sales prices, you can't, you know, you can't charge a different price for liquor that you could maybe at a restaurant or whatever. To have that low of a cost of goods means that y'all are doing a great job monitoring your inventory, at least in the fiscal year '23, '24. Salaries, a little less than 10% of total sales. Salaries increased about 10% from the previous year. Again, operating expenses, 10 and a half percent, and an increase of about 15% from the previous year. Yes, there are some comparisons in the report I submitted between you and some other boards. It is hard for me to find apples-to-apples comparisons between different areas. I heard salaries mentioned, and salaries are a lot higher than some of the two other boards that have almost identical sales in one store. Geography is a big player in salaries, as everyone knows. Budgets, the previous year, no budget amendments were submitted. We have received budget amendments recently for the current fiscal year, but something that does need, based on this review, does need to be addressed and has been addressed. Net position for the board as of June 30th, 2020, or yeah, June 30th, 2024, was over $1.5 million, very strong, increased over 20% in the last five years. Distributions, we gave over $565,000 to the city and a little, and then another 42 to the library, 657 to include the law enforcement payments and alcohol education. $1.5 million in primary distributions, that's just a warm and fuzzy word for taxes, but still a million and a half dollars to both, a little bit to the county, but most of that to the state of North Carolina. Since inception, we've given almost not quite $2.5 million to the Town of Anger, and again, 600 of that was last year, to the Town of Anger and its other recipients. Working capital's fully maxed as of the last day of the fiscal year. Can't do any better than fully maxed. The rest of my, that's the performance standard. You meet every one of them. Yes, the inventory turnover's a little bit lower, but it's, but that's kind of par for the course in the way with all the different products and everything that's going on in the, in the industry and an ever-changing industry. The rest of my report focuses a lot on box checking and a lot on operations, different ways things do. Sometimes I try to offer some guidance if it's a manager who maybe, I don't know, if I do have guidance to offer. I did not have a ton of guidance to offer in my visit with your current board personnel. They are certainly, I felt like they were certainly making strides to, even though still new and unsure about a few things, making strides to get everything done correctly. I do have a few recommended actions from the report. The first one's kind of one that I'm, I don't know if I've ever had this conversation, but you have a, you have an unusual, in my opinion, charter, an unusual local enabling act, the state law that created you, and then it was amended again in 1971. But it has an unusual, anyway, for me, it's an unusual distribution formula. It uses some verbiage that you don't commonly see in statutes, such as "may," is kind of the, kind of the word that I'm hanging on. My recommendation to the board was to discuss with the town the possibility of a resolution to amend that, or at least the possibility of, I'm not saying you should, I'm not saying that the board should, that you as the town board should pass that resolution. I just think the ABC board should consider asking you and consider making sure everybody's on the same page with those distributions. Two, I guess y'all have had two different CPA auditors over the last five years, and one of the two of them, the money's still there, the money's the same, it's the presentation of the audit reads differently than I think it should read. Second recommended action is budget amendments, and that's already been taken care of for the current fiscal year. I don't know the trajectory and where that's headed as far as what your current sales are, what your sales are for May. I would not have looked at that at this point in early June, but the amendments have been made. Some of these are just kind of par for the course and my, they're sort of my usual suspects. Any recipients from your alcohol education distributions are supposed to provide a report to the board, who in turn provides that report to this board, and those reports were not available to me when I visited back in April. So, something that they just need to, hopefully, it's as easy as an email. A lot of quality oversight, that's kind of one of my focuses from a compliance standpoint, is making sure there's proper oversight between the different statutory obligated board personnel positions. It's all in place. Some of the I's and T's aren't crossed. There's an actual certificate that they're supposed to place on anything that's about to be purchased, any kind of purchase orders, which wasn't being done or wasn't fully being done, I guess. Again, there's another certificate they're supposed to place on any disbursement payments, usually checks, that was being missed, even though the finance officer who's supposed to be placing that stamp there is signing the checks. She's still, just by statute, has to, has to make that connection. And then a little bit of policies that could stand to be either tightened up or made altogether. One noteworthy is having a credit card policy for the personnel is pretty important and has been a subject matter that some other ABC boards wished they had in place before things happened. I will be happy to expound upon anything in this report. Again, I know I'm not a particularly strong warator, so thank you for putting up with me.
I think you did a fine job.
Thank you, sir.
Would it be appropriate for me to ask you if you could give this report a letter grade, what you might, would do?
So, I've played around with that before. Thank you for asking the question, because it's actually easy for me. In some email correspondence between my big boss, the chairperson of the ABC Commission, he offered you a letter grade.
He did?
And a very impressive letter grade.
I agree.
He said he gave you an A and minus some of this little stuff that he, probably not a big part of his universe, this, a lot of these little nitpicky stuff are really par for the course in almost every report I've written in my short stint in this position. Not every one of them, but I mean, the, anyway, he offered you an A and said it was close to an A+ and I'll stand by him. Why would I, why would I not?
I appreciate you being willing to come and chose the report. We read it. It was emailed. I thought it appropriate, considering this is where it started, that this be where it is ended. In my opinion, I think that report is pretty clear, and so I appreciate your coming in. We put you on the spot.
I appreciate you enduring reading it. I know it's, I know it's a long and not particularly entertaining read. Well, thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
We have some questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please.
Go ahead. Okay. When the previous person that came up here and talked, she talked about 79 bottles. Can you explain to them what the 79 bottles could be?
No, so I don't, I don't have any knowledge of the 79 bottles.
Could that be for damage?
You mean missing bottles?
Well, like, if a customer goes in and they damage a bottle and everything.
Oh, sure, that's a possibility.
That's written off. Because by law, they can't take it back, right? Correct? I'm addressing him. Thank you. Well, I'm addressing him because he actually knows.
All right. Please, sir.
It can depend. As far as are they, I mean, I guess there could be all kinds of variables in what you're asking, but as far as the 79 bottles go, I mean, A, I'm not saying that's not accurate. I don't know that number.
Right.
And then there's a big difference in bottles. I mean, some bottles cost $0.95.
Exactly.
Some bottles cost $195.
Exactly. Because like, if you get a 12-pack of the little bottles, you have to count, that's a whole pack.
Yeah, I mean, if I were to put a, if I were to put a sleeve of, if I were to put a sleeve of what I call, what I used to call airplane bottles in my pocket.
Right.
Then I just took 10 or sometimes 12 bottles.
Exactly.
So, I'm not saying 17 is a big number, was it 79?
79.
I'm not saying that's a big number or a small number. I don't live in the bottle universe. I live in the cost of goods universe, and your cost of goods was very low.
Very low. That's what I'm trying to get at.
Probably almost on the cusp of being too, sometimes things that are too good to be true can be. I suspect there's a little bit washed from the previous year, where your cost of goods were high. So, if you can imagine, if you ordered a ton of liquor in June of '23, then you might have a high cost of goods for the fiscal year '23, and then you don't order as much in July of '24, therefore, your cost of goods goes down.
I just don't want people to think that there's anything... I just don't want people to think that there's anything with stuff going on in the store that shouldn't be going on, nothing criminal.
Number of bottles, I can't speak to. I have yet to visit a board that hasn't
Had.
Had iss- hasn't
Right.
Isn't aware of some liquor entering the business that left without being paid for in some form or fashion. I'm, I'm not saying, I can't say I know that, but I've
Right.
That's what has been conveyed to me by about maybe a third of the boards in the state.
But they do have to write off if they have, you know, damage in the store, that could be a part of the seventy-nine bottles.
Yep, so, so generally speaking, the suppliers will damage something that comes off the truck in a bad way.
That's right.
Damage label, whatever it may be, generally speaking, they should not be writing off what's damaged by either board personnel or a customer.
Exactly.
Generally speaking.
Yeah.
I can't tell you that it's never happened, I certainly would.
Right.
I don't, I don't know that it has, I suspect it probably has.
Right.
I have some questions. The previous speaker, and I know you can't speak to her comments, mentioned several different things about budget amendments that weren't being done and other issues that had not been done, issues with cash management, and her coming from, just coming off of the board and having those experiences, bad experiences, and then getting an A-plus report from you, I'm a little confused as to where we're at in that because she draws a picture of a very large issue and you draw a picture of a very small issue, and I need to reconcile that because either of the two of you, both of the two of you are professionals in it and I am not, asked to make a decision and I'm torn between the two ideas.
Sure, sure.
How would you go about reconciling the differences in the two reports?
Sure. So not to be, I don't, I feel like I'm about to sound like a smart aleck, just, just so I'm not misspeaking. I didn't offer you an A, I don't, I don't, I might offer you something similar, my, my boss offered that letter grade for you. The budget, yeah, I mean, the budget was, was really off for the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year and no amendments were submitted and that, and that's a failure. I will say that I have since received amendments since my visit, I, I, maybe, well, anyway, it was in the last week, so I couldn't tell you the day I got them, I guess I could turn my computer on if you were super interested, but I'm.
As part of your investigation, do you interview or speak with the previous people that are on the boards to answer any of these questions or to?
Sure, so generally speaking, and I don't hope I didn't just cut you off, but generally speaking, I don't speak to board members at all unless they would like to speak to me. My, my visits are focused with personnel.
So their concerns and what you see may not actually have ever crossed paths. If you didn't see something on paper or see something in the numbers, they have concerns with some issues that may not always show up in the number.
Well, one thing I, I do believe that I'm privy to, so, so what I'm reviewing in the capacity of my current job as I'm performing it today, I've done some source document auditing in my life in my previous role within the ABC Commission, but I'm, that's really not what I'm doing. I'm simply reviewing, you, every ABC board is required to receive a independent, fully independent, meaning independent of me and anybody associated with the board, independent, me being a commission employee member, no, I'm not a commission member, I'm an employee. So this, you know, I don't, I'm not auditing source doc- I'm not source documenting, I 'm not chasing money. I'm just reviewing what the previous CPA auditor did and, and it's my understanding, and if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, that the chairperson who came off the board a few months ago was probably, maybe I'm inferring, maybe I'm incorrectly inferring, but was probably referring to something that had happened in those months, which is not what I'm reviewing here. So your independent auditor didn't, didn't address any, there's some stewardship on, some stewardship notes, meaning some, they're addressing some shortcomings and to include some of the budget expenditures, which, which is important. I'll just be real frank with you, you're, it's not the only board in the state that didn't appropriately amend their budget last year.
So, so in reality, in order for us as a board to get a full picture of what's going on with our ABC board, we need to look at both sides and possibly have that external audit done prior to any acceptance of this is the way it is.
Well, the audit's going to be done either way, by, by statute, I mean, by, by absolute law, it's, it's going to be done hopefully on time. That, I mean, that's a, that's a you to, you know, not, I don't, I hate to say this, but that's your decision, not, not really my decision. My decision is just to consider, you're in the situation where any kind of grow, I mean, you're busting at the seams in the store. In the next few years, I'm, this isn't fact, this is, it's hearsay at the time, and I've been working for the state for a pretty good amount of while, not everything that you're told ha- actually comes to fruition. But the state is working towards a new warehouse, which is going to provide an immense amount of products to, to each and every ABC board. What that specifically means for Andrew, it's not really my decision to say, my job is more just to make you aware that, to be thinking, to be expecting those changes coming. And you're maxed out on working capital, you probably, I mean, this is, this is outside the realm of what I ought to be speaking about, I assume, but I don't know what they're coming to, to, I don't know the presentation that's coming after me, but the, the way our system is designed to set up to allow for future capital improvements, you are at the most ideal place you could possibly be. The timing, in an opinion, this is not the ABC Commission's opinion, Edwin Strickland talking to you, you are in, the timing is correct to consider it at the very least.
Now, I know the last meeting that you all had with the board, when you came in and presented to the ABC store board, I asked you what were the responsibilities of this board overseeing that, because we've been told by numerous people that the only thing that we have is appointment and removal power. That, other than that, they don't need to have any kind of interaction with us. I think I spoke with you and you said any projects that they are trying to, now, guide me on this, but were you inferring that when they want to do a certain project or they're wanting to do stuff, they have to come and have board approval before they move forward? Is, do you recall the conversation we had?
Not, not to a T, I mean, I certainly remember speaking to you, thank you, and I appreciate you taking the time to speak to me. To try to answer that in best I can, I mean, you're, is the board's obligation to appoint? Absolutely. Is the board's obligation for due calls to remove? Absolutely.
Right.
The town board rather. You are statutorily allowed to request certain things, pretty vague, in fact, it, I think it says pretty much any report. You're certainly supposed to be supplied with budgetary. I don't know that it says budget amendments, certainly the original budget, which will probably be presented here shortly. It's a fine line and, and, you know, I might just be, just as well to, projects, I mean, if it's going to exceed, if, if it requires a capital improvement plan, then absolutely, they need your approval. Does the board necessarily need your approval to, to paint? No, I don't think they do.
Nothing like that.
And I mean, I don't know, I'm, maybe I'm in a position where if I, if I keep talking, I'll some, say something I shouldn't say.
Walk up to my life.
Yeah.
Okay, so since we, this has been brought to our attention by some people, transparency on open meetings. What is your suggestion about open meetings and time and stuff like that? I know it's at discretion of their board, but can you tell me?
Sure.
Your take on it?
I've, I've been to, I go to board meetings and sometimes call into them remotely or, you know, telephone, teleconference, whatever, Zoom. I've been to ones at seven-thirty in the morning, I've been to seven-thirty PM, coincidentally, those are the extremes. I've never been to one that wasn't on a weekday. I'm in, I'm on a board of a nonprofit, or actually, I'm not, I was, was until April on the board of a nonprofit. Coincidentally, we've met Tuesdays at six-thirty PM and oftentimes other members of the board weren't able to attend, so I, you know, I don't know. Certainly you want your board members to be there, that's kind of number one. I mean, of course, you would want public, you know, the public to have the opportunity to come, there's, there are posting requirements for the meetings. As far as what's the best time of day, no, I don't, I mean, I don't really know what to say there. I, I, I'm a firm reliever, I'm a utilitarianist, I think if it's what's good for most people is, is the way you should go, but
Amen.
I don't, and that's not, the ABC Commission's answered us. Edwin Strickland talking to you.
Okay.
I have a question. We had an email that was sent to us this evening and I'm sure everybody has gotten it and it's, I don't know if it has any relevance on what you're, you did with your, your audit, your performance audit. It's, it's public knowledge from what I understand, I mean, I'll give you a copy of this, let you look at it. It's, some of it's pretty concerning and I don't understand if that's the case, why did, wasn't any of that looked into?
At this point in my career, at this point in my somewhat new role with the commission, I haven't been directed to look into that. I mean, I'm doing what my boss told me to do, I'm doing what I was, what I have been instructed to do, I'm asking the questions, I'm checking the boxes, I'm reviewing the materials that I've been directed to review.
So we can actually go and maybe talk to ABC State Commission and ask requests if they can look into that?
Well, again, I think that's the, that's the, I mean, you can request anything you like and I, I really mean that and I'll be happy to facilitate any requests for you. And you don't need me for that, you can do it, you know how to do that. That is the, the sole, well, not the sole purpose, I'm sure, but that is one of the major purposes why each and every ABC board is required to go through an independent audit each year. Again, that's not just independent from the board personnel, that's independent from the commission as well.
Right.
I mean, do I have the skill set to review some of that? Absolutely, I do have a, I don't, I don't, I've been a supervisor and more in my career, right now I'm a button, I do what my boss asks me to do, I look at what I'm directed to look at.
I want to ask one more question before we leave. The distribution of money, I know one of the, you say it needs to start coming back to the town, correct?
I don't.
I know they can disperse it to alcohol, different organizations for that, the police department. I was just curious because a donation was given to the Dunn Police Athletic Activity League, and I was just wondering, you know, when our guys could benefit from it, you know?
Do we have a police activities league?
No, but still, I mean, if, if it's supposed to be coming to our town, why are we going? There's two stores in Dunn, they can get money from.
Are we?
The charter requires it to come to, to the town of Andrew's general fund. It's, it's very specific, ten percent to the Andrew Community Library, which we've talked about that issue previously. Ten percent may be used in the ABC board's discretion for educational programs. If they don't use that, that money goes to the general fund because it says the remainder of net profits should be allocated to the general fund of the town of Andrew.
I was just wondering why.
I would be.
That's all I have. Thank you so much for your wisdom.
Anyone else?
Is it time for us to make a motion?
It's just a presentation.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Strickland.
Can I, can I add a couple quick comments here?
Please.
I know the request was made to amend the charter. We don't have that authority. There, there's only certain things you can amend that this board can amend in a charter set forth in general statutes. It's really more about the type of elections we have, the number of council members, we could, we could change the name of the town, things like that, but you cannot change anything that is not set forth in that statute.
Right.
So any change in the distribution of profits would have to be done by the general assembly. And then I'll also point out that the, the extent of our authority on the, on control of the ABC board is set forth in general statute eighteen B seven hundred, and that lists the things we can and can't require and can and can't do. We certainly can make records requests as any citizen can because they're a public board, so we can get information from them, but, but we are limited in the control that we have over their actions based on that statute.
Perhaps we can ask the chairman of the ABC board to elaborate on how the decision is made to distribute funds. I know they were evenly distributed to four organizations in Harnett County, so maybe he can give some direction, I know we'll talk to him in a little bit, so.
All right. We're going to move on to public hearing. Derek, we've got the proposed budget for twenty-five, twenty-six.
We do.
I'll let you give us an introduction and then I'll open the public hearing.
Okay, before I start the introduction of the, the budget for twenty-five, twenty-six, I do want to introduce our new town of Andrew finance director, Kristen Stafford, and she's been with us about two months and she will be up here to do a budget amendment a little bit later in the show, so.
Great.
But I wanted to introduce her before we got started. Couple, a, couple highlights real quick with the, with the upcoming budget. First of all, I want to thank the elected officials for y'all's help and assistance, also all the department heads and the staff, couldn't have done it without them and you It's a, it's a balanced budget, the general fund's going to be balanced at eleven million seven hundred twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and ten dollars with the tax rate remaining neutral at forty-nine cents. We will be adding one full-time position in Public Works and we are adding two new police cadet officers in that cadet program. They were actually in the town hall today filling out their paperwork and getting all set up for that, so we're excited about that program actually coming to fruition. I know we started it, you know, like a couple of years ago and now it's starting to really bear some fruit, so to speak. So we're excited about that. Public Works will be adding a new equipment storage building and purchasing a new bucket truck. That's to kind of help offset the having to rent the equipment when we put up decorations or flags or take stuff down, so Brandon says that that's a, that will be a vital part of their day-to-day activities is having that truck at their disposal, basically, to be able to reach things and not have to rent a piece of equipment every time we need something, so. Parks and Rec will be replacing some picnic tables at the main entrance pavilion there at the children's park. Those picnic tables are about sixteen years old, seventeen years old, and they're starting to get a lot of wear on them. We will also be adding an obstacle course type playground in the Jack Marley Park area, and that is an additional playground to the, the handicap accessible playground that we will be getting started at the end of June, so. There's two playgrounds going at Jack Marley Park. I get into a little bit of the, the nuts and bolts of the stuff here. CPI recommended rate for trash and recycle is four point four percent, and so, just to give you an idea what that breaks down to, residential trash will be an increase of forty-one cents per month, per customer, and twenty-one cents for recycle per month, per customer. Commercial trash will increase sixty-four cents per month, per customer. So that's pretty much the, the Cliff Notes version of our general fund budget. The utility fund is an enterprise fund, which will be balanced at seven million three hundred sixty-two thousand five hundred ninety-four dollars. The CPI recommended rate increase for water sewer is also four point four percent. The resident water increase base rate would be ninety-eight cents a month, and anything over two thousand gallons would be twenty cents per thous- per thousand gallons per month. Non-residents increase is dollar ninety-five per month, up to two thousand gallons, and anything over that for a non-resident is thirty-nine cents per thousand gallons. Sewer increase, base rate increase is eighty-one cents per month, up to two thousand gallons for residents, and anything over two thousand gallons will be thirty-three percent per thousand gallon, thirty-three cents per thousand gallons over to two thousand gallons. And non-resident sewer increase is a dollar sixty-two per month, up to two thousand gallons. And non-resident sewer increase is 65 cents for anything over 2,000 gallons per thousand gallons. I know that's a lot of numbers, but it's not very much money when we're really talking about it, so. With that being said, there's no other rate and fee increases in this year's upcoming budget, which we feel really good about. So, Mayor, I'll turn it over to you and once the public hearing is closed, you guys can vote to adopt this year's upcoming budget. Any questions for me before I let the mayor put us into public hearing?
All right. So since this is not a quasi-judicial hearing, nobody has to be sworn in for the public hearing. So I'm going to hereby open the public hearing. And if you have a question or a comment regarding the budget, we ask that you join us up here at the podium and let us know. It's a whole bunch of pages. All right, I'm going to move to some board questions just to see if there are any. I'll leave the public hearing open in case somebody gets an idea. Derek, do we have money in here for tech somewhere? Cameras, audio equipment?
Yes, we do.
Okay, not in contingency?
No.
Okay. Thank you for that. That was very important to me. Uh, we had discussed at the budget retreat also making a donation, I guess, or a partnership with the Harnett County Economic Development. Is that in here? Where did we land on that one?
That is in the governing body.
Okay.
Um, part of your special projects this year.
Sometimes I don't know what, what division you put it in, so thank you. What was that amount? I'm going to look for it, but if you remember.
$25,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Which is, which I believe, now I'm quoting you guys on this, that is the amount that Dunn and Lillington are also putting in the Harnett County Economic Development Program as well.
That's what we've been told.
So we, we wanted to make sure that we were at least equal to those guys on that.
Yeah.
They have a jobs program that they're implementing to bring more jobs to Harnett County and this is a way for us municipalities to invest in that, which is a big deal. To me at least.
Well, economic, economic development is something we need to be on top of. And if we don't have a staff member to work on it, then partnership with the county, you know, with the, with an even investment from everyone else will hopefully help us with that. Anybody else have any questions? We have got line by line by line here. I don't think there's a lot of changes from what you brought to us at the retreat, but, Ms. Bishop?
Just one quick question. So you have a line item expecting income from the ABC store. So that may change tonight. Because if they're going to be trying to retain more of their earnings, that's going to reduce the amount of money that's coming to the town. I just wanted to ask you, what is your plan for that?
Right now, there is no plan for that. If they change it, we've just based it on the past few years of what they have been donating to the town and we went off of that. I had no reason to change it.
Okay. Last year, we did a lump sum of $300,000 because when I came in as Chair, there was a 1.4 million in the bank.
Right.
And the board all met and said, that's absurd amount of money. Let's give some of that to the town.
Right.
So you're not going to get that again, and I'm certain.
Right. We went back and looked at the quarterly donations and we didn't base it off of the lump sum donation. Um, I went back like three years and went each quarterly donation that we got and then kind of done, you know, we are growing. Hopefully, you know, everything's going to go up. We, we.
And I expect.
Obviously, we'd like the ABC Board to continue to donate money to the town as much as possible, so.
Well, I just wanted to make sure because what he reported on was the 2324 audit from last year. He didn't report on anything that's happened since July 1 of 2024 to today.
Right. And, and I will say this, the donations we've gotten so far have been pretty similar to what we've gotten in years past.
Okay. So I just want you to be aware, you know, that I hope y'all have a plan in place because when they say we don't want to pay, you know, our obligations, we want to pay the minimum instead of that, you need to have a plan in place. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Derek, I have a question. Are funds that come from the ABC store to the town considered donations or are they considered obligations?
Obligations.
Okay, so there really is no donation from the ABC store to the Town of Andrew?
They're required by charter to give us the net proceeds minus the 10% to the public library and their discretionary 10% for training or educational purposes for alcohol awareness, alcohol issue.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, Steve, everything in this budget is our best estimate, estimated of what we perceive we're going to have based on what we have gotten in the past, based on we, our perceived growth. Same, same thing with the ad valorem type stuff. We get numbers from Harnett and Wake County that kind of help us with that. They kind of give us, they kind of give us a cheat code a little bit on that.
I didn't want there to be a misconception with the public as to where, whether it was a donation or an obligation.
It is an obligation.
ABC store is not out of being kind to the town, giving us money out of the kindness of their heart. It's, it's a requirement by law, by charter.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you for your hard work. You know, it was an uphill battle to get here, so.
All right, any other comments? Liz, do we have an extra microphone? If you don't speak into a mic, it doesn't get recorded. So we'll, we'll get you one.
I'm Kathy Price Horton. What is the money used for that you get from the ABC Commission?
So correct me if I'm wrong, but the money that we get, that part of it that's in everything else goes to the town. Goes into our general fund, the money that we could spend on anything. Now, there is a, a part of that that says we could spend up to 25% on Parks and Rec. And, and thank you for asking because I'm a little confused on that too. Is that a limit or?
It's a little oddly worded.
Yeah.
Because it says we can use the entirety of it for any governmental function.
Yeah.
And we can use, I guess it's up to 25% for recreation programs. So I guess what that, the way you would reconcile those is we can use it on anything, but we can only use 25% of it for parks and the remaining 75% or more, we have to use for some other purpose.
Okay.
As currently, as it's currently written.
Yeah, but it goes, it goes straight into general fund, so it's actually a line item in what we expect our general fund revenues to be for the year.
Now, who came up with that, that they were obligated to pay the town? I'm just.
The General Assembly.
State of North Carolina.
So if that's the case, and I, and I'm new here, I hadn't been here that long. Why is the ABC Board in Andrew giving to Dunn? I don't think the General Assembly, I deal with them daily, would agree to that. I'm, I'm just totally confused. Why would y'all give it to Dunn? And why would you give it to the Boys and Girls Club when you've got children here in Andrew that needs it? Now, something's not right. If you're going by the General Assembly, because they're higher than anybody in this room. Something's not right and something's got to be done about it. You can't put it under the rug and forget it. You got to do something about it.
We're hoping that the, the gentleman tonight, the ABC Board Chairman, can maybe shed a little light on how they chose those. Because I don't, I don't know if it was a limitation on Andrew children's programming that they could give to because it's for alcohol, alcohol education.
I think there's a conflict there, Chevelle, excuse me, but the person you're going to talk to is Mr. Langley, correct?
No, the board chairman is Mr. Ethan Alexander-Davy.
Mr. Langley is on the board of the ABC Commissioner and he's also on the board of the Boys and Girls Club. I mean, you're, you're just not thinking, you're, the General Assembly, okay, they give you money. You have to go by their rules. You can't make up your own. You can't give it to another town when you need it in your town.
Absolutely.
You can't do that. So I don't know why y'all keep putting it on that rug, putting it on that rug because that rug is up. Trust me, the rug is up and it's all coming out. So I just want to know why Dunn got it. Dunn should pay you back. Why did Dunn get it? You know, and I don't have children. I mean, they're older, but look at all these kids in Andrew. They need somewhere to go. They need the money.
Just this last meeting, we were discussing how to come up with funds to help our local children. So that's not just a question you had, it's a question that I had as well.
Well, you, you, you was trying to come up with money, but it went to Dunn.
That was prior to.
I know that's Harnett County, but.
No, but it was prior to the ones sitting here questioning.
I mean, when you get something from the General Assembly, you, you, you need to be honored and you need to be thankful that they took the time and gave it to you because there's other town that deserves that money. And the money y'all been getting, y'all didn't deserve it the way you're giving it away.
Yeah, well, that, that is an issue that we're looking at very closely. It happened prior to.
And I'm speaking on my half, not my brother junior. He's my brother, but I'm speaking on my half. Okay, I was born and raised here, but the way you're doing, the General Assembly, y'all, y'all just laughing in their face. I mean, they just can't give money out like that. They just can't. So something's got to be done. Dunn should pay y'all back. That's your money, Mr. Mayor.
This board did not make that decision. That was the ABC.
It should be brought to y'all.
Thank you.
That's the final vote. You're the mayor. It should be brought to y'all to make that decision, not the ABC Board Commission. Don't they work for y'all?
Yeah.
Don't they work for you, Derek Garrett? Derek? I mean, I mean, you know what I'm saying? Who gave them the authority?
We appointed them.
But who gave them, you appointed them, but you also can take them down. Who gave them the authority to send it to another town? If it's somebody on the board, then they should come off the board.
Right, because we didn't, we didn't know.
Well, now it's out in the public and there's no telling what might happen now.
Exactly. That's one of the reasons I brought that up tonight and you see how.
And you might think, oh, that's Junior, he's talking. This is Kathy. I'm totally different.
I appreciate you coming up here, Kathy.
Yeah, because I'm sick of it. I sit at home, I'm sick of it. And there's no need to smile at me. Honey, I know more than anyone on the board, okay? So there's no need to smile at me because I know what's going to happen. You're giving money that the General Assembly gave you, ABC Board gave, uh, gave it to Dunn. You, you just can't do this.
Okay, all right, hold on, hold on, hold on.
It's the net proceeds from.
I know it's a net proceeds, but let me tell you, the General Assembly gave you rules to go by.
They did not give us the money.
No, they didn't.
And those monies, and, and I might be wrong and we'll ask the chairperson if this is the case, but the monies that were given to Dunn and Boys and Girls Club are not the same pool of money that would go to the town. It is, I assume, and I'll, I'll let him answer when we get to it, that they were part of the alcohol education program.
Right.
And I don't know the parameters for what that is. The state sets that and, and Mr. Ethan Alexander-Davy might know what the parameters are.
Attorney, when you got the Bible.
For the purposes of the town budget.
They, they do have a discretionary 10%.
What's in there for Dunn?
Well, it's the discretionary 10% is, is they can use it for education involving, you know, issues regarding alcohol. I, I don't know the answer to that, but that's, that's by, by their charter, they have, they have the discretion to spend up to 10% of their net proceeds on alcohol education. So whatever that encompasses.
And I'm glad that you brought it up, the conflict of interest with the girls and boys because of Joe Langley being on that board and also a board member of the ABC store. That is a conflict of interest and should, he should have not been, they should not have been given money. It doesn't look, everybody wants transparency in the perception and everything.
It doesn't look good. Andrew is a good town. Y'all have done a great job there. You've done a wonderful job. And I hate to see you go down the drain, you know, because you're doing a wonderful job. You just got to make sure that these peoples on this board is not doing what they want to do. They have to go by the rules.
Well, thank you for the comment because it did bring up questions that I had too. All right, are there any other public comments or questions related to the budget?
Thank you, Kathy.
I just have a question. In the presentation, it was brought up that $42,000 of the ABC Board money has been distributed to the town for the library as legislation. And I just was wondering if the town had plans to distribute that money to the public library.
Is that the money that's actually been in that fund that's been spent there?
So we've, yeah, we've discussed this issue in the past because the, the way the charter reads is, let me pull it up here. I believe they have to spend 10% on the Andrew Community Library is, is what's written. And my understanding, there is no Andrew Community Library anymore. At least as, as designated as the Andrew Community Library. There is a library, but it's not the Andrew Community Library. And so we, yeah, we had discussed getting that.
That's what's been the problem for years.
And that can only be changed by legislation.
Correct, because we cannot amend that provision of the charter without the General Assembly doing it.
Right.
So we've discussed having that language amended so that those funds can go to the correct entity. My understanding is the ABC Board has been holding those funds, that 10%, because they cannot distribute it to the Andrew Community Library as required by the charter. So they've requested that this board do something about that. We need to get the General Assembly to do something about that so that those funds can be released to wherever the General Assembly amends the charter to tell us we consent it or tell they consent.
So is the report wrong? The $42,000 was distributed to the town or was it not?
Well, there, there is money that is distributed to the town, but that's different. So there's 10% goes to Andrew Community Library, 10% for discretionary alcohol education. That, up to 10% in their discretion and any remainder goes to the Town of Andrew General Fund.
But he specifically said that there was $42,000 for the public library distributed. So I just was wondering if there's clarification on that.
We may have to ask them because I, I mean, any money that comes to the Town of Andrew should be for our general fund, for, for this board's discretionary use.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we did adopt a resolution and it came from the ABC Board. It says, you know, currently that the 10% net profits be paid to the community library. Sees that the Board of Commissioners finds that the redirection of these funds to recreational program within the town limits would serve a clear public purpose and support the health and well-being of its residents. So I was just checking my own facts there. We've, we've adopted a resolution to remove any funding from the library on behalf of the ABC Board's request. Is that correct?
We may have done a resolution, but I think we still need to have that charter language corrected because that money that's for the library, we want to give it to the correct library. So we need, we need to correct the name and the, now, we can use our own, the money that comes to Andrew's general funds, however, for any legitimate government purpose, which could be the library.
So the money that's actually in that fund though, it can't be given back because it has to go, because it's already been deemed for that.
It's.
It has to go to the library.
Well, the, the 10% has to go to the Andrew Community, it says shall be paid to the Andrew Community Library.
Right.
And the, the, the issue is.
We just got to get the legislation to go ahead and do their job.
To release those funds to the correct entity.
Okay. Can you get started on that, please?
Well, it, it's going to take an act of the General Assembly, so we need to contact them and ask them to amend our charter, yes.
Are we supposed to be swearing in the participants in this debate?
No, this is not quasi-judicial, so we don't need to swear anyone in.
Okay. My, my check, I just have a question.
Sure. Mr. Bishop?
I'm really glad about all the discussion about this tonight. This is a subject that needs discussion and there's been some good points raised and some good questions asked. This, this money is a source of great interest to your community, obviously. But there's a lot of discretion in what's done with it. And so that, it seems like that's where the concern's coming up. This is a trick question. Whose money is that? That's right. It's our money.
That's right.
It's, it's, it's your money and my money and all of their money. And I like it to be viewed as that. So I'm glad you corrected the, the use of the term donation because you don't donate my own money to me.
Exactly.
You know, every dollar that is given to the town general fund is a dollar that y'all don't have to borrow. And that, that is good fiscal policy and that's the intent of the overall structure of North Carolina's ABC sales. That's their intent. Now, some, some other stuff has crept in there and some people may use it as a honey hole for different projects of theirs. I am a, um, old-school grouchy guy. I am a, um, old-school grouchy guy that wants my money to be spent the way it's supposed to be spent. And if anybody has any ideas on spending it another way, I want to be convinced, I can be convinced, but convince me, don't just say, I'm going to keep some of your money and it'll be good.
Mm-hmm.
Exactly, thank you so much for coming up and talking about it.
All right, anyone else for budget? If not, then I will close the open hearing. We may have discussion amongst ourselves. You guys have any questions for Garrett?
He's got a great job.
There's some great questions that came up that I don't think we have the answer to right now, but we would like to find the answer to. But as it relates to the budget, I think I'm, I'm pretty good.
You ready for a motion?
Public.
Uh, the board would have to allow you to speak, does the board, did you close the public hearing? I did, and it's closed. Okay.
Denise Galloway, um, I live in the Duncan Community of Harney County, five nine five three Cokesbury Road, actual Fuquay Arena address, still Harney County, huge fan of the library. Spent a lot, a lot, lot of hours in every library here in Harney County. So my question is, who on this board or in this town would liaison with the state legislature to get that verbiage changed? Because I want to help you do that.
That would be very much appreciated, um.
Who's the person?
We we will have to decide that, but.
Because I'm, I'm getting ready to call my friend right now.
Okay, well, I I believe the resolution passed, and I just pulled it up just to look at it again, so the resolution was to ask the General Assembly for that change.
Right.
So, yeah.
I think we discussed.
So we have done the resolution, then we just need to.
We missed the last, because it was April first or whatever, and we were past that docket, so we're waiting on the next docket to actually.
Okay. Okay, so I guess my specific question would be, what, does does Senator Jim Bergen know this is an issue? Because I feel certain he would help.
We've talked many times, uh, in the past, and I don't know, well, I haven't personally.
Okay.
But I know it from what I was told by previous town managers, stuff like that, it had been, whether it, anything's, you know, materialized, I don't know.
All right, if there's anything I can do to help you with that along, I would love to, because the libraries are hugely important.
It is.
To to be clear, the resolution was to change the funding from the library to recreational programming. So.
No, the thing is, we have a lump sum that's been sitting in escrow for years. That is already designated, it can't be changed, am I correct? Uh, correct? I mean, that money has to get it in, but moving forward.
Yes.
Then we've, we've changed.
So I guess the issue, the issue is, I understood it when when they first raised this with us, is that the Andrew Community Library, quote unquote, is no longer an entity because it's, it changed names or or it changed, uh, on to under the county or however it was.
Right.
So their question was, we're required by law by the charter to give ten percent of our net profits to the Andrew Community Library.
Right.
And we can't do that because there is no Andrew Community Library. And so we were seeking some guidance from the General Assembly of changing the charter to allow those funds to be distributed elsewhere. Now, that could be, uh, the lib, the library, um, it's whatever the General Assembly will allow us to do. Um, maybe we even ask the General Assembly to give some clarification to funds which had been collected, and they, we could include that in the requested change, that any funds collected up to a certain date uh, be distributed this way, and funds collected after that date be distributed this way, so it's just really a question of what, um.
That's what I would be for, the money that's been sitting in the account all that time needs to go to the library because originally that was designated where it was supposed to go. And I think once we enact that new one, I think then we can take it there, but anything before then needs to go to the library. I mean, that's just my take.
Yep, I agree.
Because that's what it was set up originally for.
I don't want to take it away from the library. It's one of the only opportunities children have in this area. We just made that very clear.
Well, and and just clarify, we still do have, um, you know, the way, the way we've phrased it in the resolution, seeking a change from the General Assembly is ten percent to Parks and Recreation or to Recreation Programs. Ten percent can still be used in their discretion for, um, you know, alcohol education. The remainder of the funds go to our general fund and can be used for any legitimate government purpose. So we can still give funds to the library through those proceeds.
Right.
It's just the board has the discretion to do it in the way they see fit.
Don't we have to give it to the Harney County Public Library now? Didn't that take over the Andrew Public Library?
That's who, uh, sort of took over from the Andrew Community Library, which, you know, so.
And aren't they funded by the state and by our county tax dollars?
I'm not sure exactly the source of their funding, but I know.
As was the library prior to.
Right.
Changing to the county.
So we, that that money that's been sort of sitting in a, in a pool of what do we do with this was originally intended for the Andrew Community Library, if if the General Assembly allows those funds to be released to the Harney County Library, that's perfectly fine. And of course, we still have the discretion with our remainder of the the funds that go into the general fund to spend those as we see fit.
Right.
And we have an opportunity right now, interestingly enough, since we are going to be revisiting the contract with the library, if the concern is that the money wouldn't directly benefit the Andrew Library and might leak out the other ones, which which wouldn't be the worst thing anyway, but if we're trying to keep the money at home, um, there's an opportunity maybe to, as we rewrite the contract, to not make them pay utilities and to budget for the utilities for that library so that we are not giving money to a library entity, but we are directly benefiting this library. It's an option we have, especially now that we're going to be revisiting the contract. Now, obviously, budget-wise, we had to figure out what that would mean. Um, but we have eleven months until we have to sign a new contract. It might be a way, and I don't know for sure, of course, we have to depend on the professionals to tell me if that's right or not. But I think there are ways that we could directly benefit that library.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
As far as the money that's in the account that's sitting there, Mm-hmm. I think that money given before the dissolution of the, before the Andrew Public Library was dissolved should go to the library, to the one that dissolved it. After that, it should be up to us because that money, because that entity is not there. You can't pay a bill, or you can't donate to an organization that's not there. After the date that they dissolved and became the Harney County Public Library, then those are the funds that we should look at. If there were any money there prior to that, I think it should go to the public library, to the Harney County Public Library. And that cutoff date has to be looked at as to when that actually happens.
I think too, I think, I think Bob's point, Mayor Bob's point is that what we don't want to do is donate money to the library here in Andrew, Harney County's library branch in Andrew, for lack of a better way to put it. And it go into Harney County's general fund and the library, and Andrew never sees the benefits from that. That is, that is what we don't want to happen, I'm assuming.
Right.
And that could easily happen, and we've got to figure out a a a alternative to that.
There, there, there's got to be a whole bunch of gray area that we can directly benefit this town through the library. I think we're just going to have to explore what that is. Okay.
And we still need to deal with the budget.
Town budget, all right. Any questions or concerns about the town budget up here? I believe we have the option to adopt the budget right now.
You do.
I make the motion we adopt the budget.
Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed?
Nope.
In favor?
In favor.
All right, it's unanimous. There you go, thank you. All right. We're going to try to cook through some of this stuff. Number two, ABC Board request, Mr. Ethan Alexander-Davy. You don't mind joining us?
Bob, I think you skipped one.
Did I?
Yep.
All right. You're right, I'm sorry.
I'll go ahead and do that real quick.
Let's do it, I get flustered and I skip stuff. Thank you for catching me.
Won't take long.
Number one, resolution.
Yep.
Derek.
Basically, this just, uh, gives, uh, Harney County and Wake County the authorization to collect taxes on the Town of Andrew's behalf.
Right.
So I'm looking for you guys to, um, make a motion and adopt this, uh, resolution to authorize Harney County Revenue Administrator to levy and collect property taxes on the, uh, behalf of Town of Andrew for the upcoming fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, and authorizing the Wake County Revenue Administrator to levy and collect property tax on behalf of Town of Andrew for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six.
Make a motion. All right, the motion is made, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. That's unanimous. All right, now, Mr. Davy, I apologize, number two, ABC Board requests.
All right, so what have I walked into tonight? Um, a lot of, uh, claims have been made, a lot of statements have been made, I cannot address all of the questions that have come up tonight, but I guarantee you I've been paying attention, I've been taking notes, and I will, uh, bring all of these questions back to my board, and I'll be prepared to answer any of these questions at a a later date. A couple of things I'll say, uh, first of all, concerning, uh, Commissioner Crisp's statement, I agree that the two stories we've heard from the, from the audit and from the public comments at the beginning tell very different stories, and they need to be reconciled. So that's, and I, some of those claims I have heard before, some I have not, so these are things that need to be investigated, and when I go back to my board, we will discuss these questions and be prepared to report to you what what we find. All right, concerning the the library, since it's come up several times, again, we we requested, uh, a change, uh, from the General Assembly to the statute that that, uh, defines what our obligations are. Uh, that's, and we presented that request already. Uh, I think even even after, uh, you know, depending on what we request from the, uh, the General Assembly, even after uh, that happens, it seems like that this, this board could still distrib, require that money to go to the library, it's just a matter of how the legislation is written. So that's, that's up to you to decide what, uh, what legislation you're looking for, what, uh, obligations you want the, uh, the General Assembly to impose on the, on the ABC Board. Uh, and and obviously, the, even if the library is administered by the county, it still serves this community. So that that's a, it seems like a, an appropriate use of those funds, but again, it's, it's for you to decide with the state legislature how that, how the, how those obligations are defined. All right, so, again, there have been lots of, uh, comments already about the request I'm going, I'm going to make. Uh, so I'll, I'll present the request all the same, and it's up to you to decide whether it's, the time is right to to grant it.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, so the, again, the, what we're asked, what the ABC Board is asking for is the ability to accrue funds for uh, capital improvements, our ABC store is already at capacity, we expect, uh, the, the town to continue to grow and there to be continued demand. And so we have a variety of possible avenues for expansion, and those are laid out in the, in the request. Uh, the difficulty with, uh, starting on something, uh, before you have money is that, well, you have no money to put down. And so if you don't, uh, we're asking for the ability to accumulate, um, up to two million dollars by paying the minimum obligations according to the statute, uh, so that we'll have something to start with, once, uh, once, once we're at the point where we can, uh, consider either another store or expanding our, our current facilities. And, uh, so it's, uh, the difficulty, you, you, you know, you could do a study and find out whether this piece of property, that piece of property might be appropriate, but if you don't have the, uh, the, the capital to act on it, then you haven't done, done yourself any favors, because the, uh, the, uh, in order, in order to be, the, you know, you do, do a study, and then, uh, two years down the road, that's, that study is no longer valid, uh, conditions have changed. So, uh, we're asking for the ability to accumulate, um, up to two million dollars, uh, so that we will be able to act once a, a plan is formed, and of course, uh, the ABC Board will consult with the Board of Commissioners about any, any plan that, uh, we hope to pursue for the expansion of our, our capacity.
I'm curious, and I don't even know how relevant it is, but I'm curious, was, was it unanimous on your board? The, the, the terms that are laid out here?
It was a unanimous vote, yes.
That's good to know. Um, I will say that, that the biggest concern I have is something that Steve Crisp brought up earlier, and I appreciate that, is we just passed a budget that factors on four hundred thousand dollars of revenue from the ABC Store. And to pass this right now would effectively put us four hundred thousand dollars short already before we start it. Is, am I wrong or?
Well, the, the minimum amount would be eighty to ninety percent, depending on how they use that ten percent discretionary fund.
Mm-hmm.
If they use ten percent of their net profits for alcohol education, the minimum is eighty percent, and then up to ninety percent, depending on how much that ten percent discretionary fund they use.
Is the four hundred that we have budgeted for the minimum? That we still would expect to receive that four hundred thousand if we pass this also?
I have no idea what percentage they're given now.
Yeah.
I think it's, I don't know.
I think the, the minimum is ten?
Ten, ten percent, but they're, again, there, there are different, uh, designations for different things, but, uh, we would, we're talking about, right, the, the, the minimum of, um, there are, there are obligations that we have to pay anyway, but, uh, that we would not give in addition to that, those obligations.
And the net profit, of course, would be defined as their, their, the money left over after they're operating.
Mm-hmm. Have you been giving more than the minimum recently? Like in the past twelve months or thirty-six months, has the town received more than the minimum required?
I can't give you this, the exact figures on that, but, uh, but we have, and I could get you that information.
Yep, they have.
That's my biggest question, and I don't know if I'm asking it wrong or not, but if, is passing this going to affect our four hundred thousand dollar revenue line? That's the, that's all I want to know. I don't know who would have the answer to that, I don't, why I'm asking.
I don't think that you can answer that, because we don't know what their gross profits are going to be, let alone know a percentage of the gross profit that they're going to be able to provide. So I don't think that there is an answer to that question.
Well, there's an answer for.
We have the authority to accept less than than the required amount.
How did we calculate that four hundred thousand dollar line item? What were we, what metric did we use to calculate in our budget that we expect four hundred thousand dollars? And then whoever calculated that.
So basically, they give us quarterly payments.
Mm-hmm.
And so we went and looked at this year's quarterly payments up to
Mm-hmm.
April through April. And then we went back and looked at the quarterly payments for the last two years before that, and kind of did an average and a little bit of an increase because it seems like it's increasing a little bit every year.
Yeah.
I, I mean, this has been something I worked on a couple of months ago, so.
Yeah.
Um, the numbers started running together, I can't remember exactly how we calculated it, but.
Yeah.
We kind of went back and then looked at what we were getting this current year, and then we went back to twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-two, twenty-three, and looked and see what the four donations were, quarterly donations were, then, and we'd kind of about went off of that, basically.
Our fiscal year twenty-twenty-five actuals as of four twenty-eight, twenty-five ABC revenue line item show three seventeen, nine thirteen, um, having been received, and the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget was adopted with a three hundred thousand dollar, um, anticipated revenue. Uh, the year before twenty-four, we received actuals three seventy-seven, four thirty-eight. We adopted a two hundred thousand dollar budget there, uh, line item. So I, I would guess this is probably just following the upswing, but I don't want to assume.
Yeah.
Yeah, just basically following the curve. I mean, that's what it is, it's kind of simple math stuff.
Is passing this going to take away from that line item?
I don't know that we can pass this, is the, is one question.
Okay, well, please, then, tell me why that is.
The charter requires them to give, uh, eighty percent of the net profits at, at least to the Town at Andrew General Fund. So there is no discretion as to how to spend those on the part of the ABC Board, there's no discretion as to what they do with their net profits, other than that ten percent discretionary amount for alcohol education. But the, the remainder is required by law to go to the Andrew General Fund. So we don't have the authority to accept less than that because the, the General Assembly has said they shall pay to the General, General, and, General Fund.
Yeah.
We, we can't go against that. We can't go against that. I'll also note that there's the request to use that money to open a new store. They all have, you do need permission of the ABC Commission to open a second store.
This is in preparation for that. We do not have a plan laid out for what that store would be.
Well, under eighteen B eight oh one A, each local board shall have the authority to one ABC store. Additional stores may be operated with approval of the Commission, so we may be putting the cart ahead of the horse here by designating funds for something that is currently not authorized.
So I guess you go back and find out from the Commission, and then we can revisit this in six months or whatever.
Yeah, so I do have, I do have one-
Even in six months, I'm not sure that we have the authority to just on our own make that change.
No, no, not making the change, but you can come back and maybe give us better numbers, because I do know, I think the store was down, don't quote me on the numbers, it was down ten percent. Okay, well, how much, Miss Cecilia, and maybe we get that back up.
So are you guys talking about building a standalone brick and mortar new store somewhere else in town? Or are you talking about, like leasing a place? Or, you know, because I mean, if you're talking about leasing a place, the upfront cost is not going to be as much, but you're going to have continual costs outside of a brick and mortar. And I don't know how this works, can the ABC store obtain loan? Can they obtain a loan?
Yes.
I think they did for their current location.
Right.
Three capital improvement initiatives were outlined in the report, just so that everybody can kind of hear. To purchase land from adjoining owner for the expansion of the current ABC store location, thereby improving customer service, product offerings, and operational space. Two, to purchase land and construct a second ABC store while continuing to operate the existing location in response to the growing demand and service needs in the area. And three, alternatively, to purchase land and construct a new ABC store with the intent to relocate operations from the current store, consolidating resources and improving overall efficiency and service.
Well, Dan, you've got me afraid to even vote on this one, if we don't have the authority.
Honestly, I'm not sure that we do, because this is all statutory, this is all law. You know, the charter is essentially, you know, the law of North Carolina that we are required to follow. So they've got their required distributions under the statute, and any net proceeds are required to be distributed pursuant to the terms of the charter.
So one hundred percent of their income is already allocated to something, eighty percent?
It's either operating costs, required payments pursuant to general statute, and anything left over is required to be distributed pursuant to the charter language. And I'll note, it's required to be that at least ninety percent of the estimated distribution is required to be done thirty days after the end of each quarter. So they can't sit on the money either. They have to pay it each quarter.
So I guess the best thing to do is go back and talk to the Commission, right?
If they want to operate a second location, then certainly they need to talk to the Commission first.
Well, and certainly, you know, y'all aren't the first ones needing a new store or something like that, so maybe leaning on neighbors that have, you know, had to make those changes, and the Commission can tell you kind of the best way.
Yeah, and perhaps, perhaps if they do get permission to operate a second store, that potentially fall under operating costs.
Right.
And then we'd still be dealing with-
Talk to the people that's done, because I got two corners. Okay, I make the motion that we table this.
Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davey. All right, number three, Derek, ending monthly utility bill courtesy calls. Sounded scary to me at first, and then I read it, so hopefully it's not that scary.
We talked about this at the budget retreat. Basically, this mass notification website update from Civic Plus allows staff to send out emails, texts, to all citizens, all at one time, instead of making individual phone calls like we're currently having to make, and it ties up a couple of staff members anywhere from twelve to sixteen hours a month. Just making these courtesy phone calls. We feel like this is going to improve the efficiency, and we've already started implementing some of these, some of this process by getting updated information from all of our customers. Cecilia said they've had a really good response.
Great.
So staff is requesting to terminate the monthly utility bill courtesy calls beginning July first, twenty twenty-five. And like I said, this will allow the system to create the mass notification for the next billing cycle at the end of July, and July utility bills will have a text code and a link to the new notification system to get registered. So we're asking for you guys to consider and approve this new resolution tonight.
So at the retreat, I remember asking you this, and I see here that it lists text, voicemail, or email. Is there a voice, you know, for people who don't text or email? Okay, that was important.
This doesn't change any payment systems that people have in place.
No, this is just letting people know that their bills due on this, you know, certain times.
Taking place of the bill that goes out, just the call?
No, this is a call. This is like, what's been happening is we've been making courtesy calls for people that are about to get shut off. And so this is just in lieu of the courtesy call, basically.
Well, the technology's there.
A technology update on the courtesy call system.
Questions?
I make a motion to approve the Finance Department to stop making courtesy calls and instead allow customers the option to sign up for the new mass notification system beginning July one, twenty twenty-five.
All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous.
I'm really excited about this, so I hope that we can maybe get them to come in and talk about it or do a little presentation, because it's multifaceted. It's going to offer a lot of quicker, I'm just, I'm excited about it. So thank you for bringing it up. Sorry, sorry, sorry. I got excited.
Number four, Harnett County IT Support Contract.
Okay, you guys have the contract in front of you. Basically, this is the agreement that we've had with Harnett County for them to do our IT and computer services. It has been budgeted across all of the departments. I just need to get y'all's approval to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six IT Computer Services Agreement between Harnett County and the town of Andrew.
All right, questions? Motion?
I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve the twenty-five, twenty-six IT Computer Service Agreement with Harnett County and Andrew.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. That's unanimous.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Derek. Jeff has got number five.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. At your last meeting, we heard from the residents of Cobal Farms, and they presented some issues regarding erosion control and stormwater. And at that time, you all wanted staff to prepare a resolution for you all to support staff and the residents of Cobal Farms in their efforts of trying to get some of these issues resolved, mostly with DEQ, the Department of Environmental Quality. So the resolution is in your packet for you all to consider tonight. As a part of an update in the last couple of weeks, I have reached out to several members of DEQ, and they will be on site on Thursday.
Great.
So they-
Hopefully, it's pouring down rain.
Yeah. Not for their sake, but you know, for informational purpose.
Representative Penny's office has gotten involved as well, so they are, DEQ is on this and will give me their report notes from their meeting or their onsite inspection. So that's the appropriate organization to hear the concerns of the residents. We're here to support and try to get the right people in place.
Yeah, you know, from where I sit, this is what I have the ability to do, but what this board has the ability to physically do ourselves. If you end up not needing it, fantastic.
Right.
But we would love for you to have this in your back pocket if you get some pushback and be like, actually, guys, you know, the board says they want you to fix it, so.
That's right.
Any questions from the board on this one? Short and sweet?
I make a motion that we pass the resolution for supporting Cobal Farms community.
All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, Jeff. Number six, Budget Amendment eleven, Kristen. In her debut appearance. We've all had one, don't worry about it.
And thanks for coming to Ann.
Thank you for having me. So we just approved the FY twenty-five, twenty-six budget, but we still have to make some adjustments for the FY twenty-five budget, and that's what this budget amendment is doing. It's increasing the general fund by seventy-six thousand dollars and increasing the water and sewer fund by a hundred ninety-five thousand. This is typical cleanup work for the end of the fiscal year.
All right, any questions?
I make a motion to approve Budget Amendment number eleven as written.
All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number seven, we have added, is this police department. Derek, are you going to present that to us? I don't know, you never know. It's that southern accent, you know?
I like her too, so. All right. By the way, Chris is doing a great job, guys, catching us up and getting us where we need to be.
You picked a good one.
Yes, we did, we did. So sorry for the late notice on this. As you all know, we've been through the police station funding and plans and pricing, and we've beat this horse pretty severely here. So the last couple of meetings we've had with USDA, their representatives, and some of the emails they have sent to us in Davenport have raised red flags, not just by me, by Davenport Financial. So we reached out last week, late last week, to Davenport to see if we could talk to them about, is there an alternate plan from USDA? And they got Sands Anderson, who's our bond counsel, together. Yesterday afternoon, we all had a meeting. It was like eight or nine of us on the call. And we all came to the agreement that unless y'all want to just stand and wait for USDA and the funds to get released, probably the best way to go, the most cost-effective way to go, is to give us approval to seek private funding, bank funding on this police station. And I say that, the best part about this is you guys have approved eight million, one hundred and forty thousand, five hundred dollars for this project, and we're not going to go over that.
We're not.
We're not going over that. And I've made that clear to Bobbitt and Davis Kane last week. We're not going over it. I hope we come in under that. The good news about going through the private bank is it's a lot faster. We feel like if you guys approve us to move forward with this pivot, so to speak, we should have an answer on funding at the August fifth meeting, because it will go in front of LGC. They meet the first Tuesday of the month, too. But we have to have a preliminary call with LGC on Monday and let them know that the board has blessed us to move forward. And once we tell them we're not going, we're not doing USDA loan anymore, we're going private funding, and this is why, then we have to stay with that. We can't go back to LGC again and say we've changed our mind. So once they say yes, go with that, then we do advertise, we're going to advertise for a public hearing. We have to have a public hearing at the July meeting. Once we do that, then they should have some numbers back to us sometime in July for you guys to compare and contrast. We'll try to get some bids, multiple banks. And hopefully, the LGC will approve our loan terms and our funding terms at their meeting during today on August fifth, and we can come to you on August fifth to approve the terms and conditions of the loan to build a new police station, and the loan closing would be on August nineteenth. So we should have funding by August nineteenth if we can get everything to fall into place. So we've kind of, we've, we're pushing Davenport and Sands Anderson pretty hard to get this done for us, because we really want to see shovels in the ground at the corner of Broad Street and MacIver.
Well, we need to, because everything's going up in price.
And the longer we wait, guys, the more the cost goes up and-
Exactly.
So are the two mutually exclusive? Do we, must we abandon USDA in order to seek private funding?
I asked that question yesterday. Can we keep both of them going, see which one comes through first? And the LGC will not allow us to do that. Yes, and I asked that question. That was the first question. I said, well, why don't we keep both of them, and whichever one comes first, let's go with it. And we're, you know, we're, the good news is, since you guys approved the budget tonight, and we're not going for USDA funding anymore, if y'all approve that, we won't have to have a meeting on the twenty-fourth. So we can cancel that meeting. That's good news. But no, Bob, I asked that question, and they said that was emphatic no.
I'm glad that you did. So the other question I have is, and I do not expect you to have exact numbers, but I expect that you probably have an idea of what the interest rate would have been through USDA and what it might be through a private bank.
So it's going to be about one point seven five percent to two percent higher with a private bank. That will be for USDA, and the terms are going to be shorter, so our debt service will be a little higher. For, like, the USDA loan was going to be thirty years or forty years.
Yeah.
A private bank's probably going to be twenty-five years.
Okay.
All right, and so we're going, our debt service is going to go up, and Davenport's putting together all the numbers for us as soon as they get numbers back from them, and as soon as they have them, I'll shoot them out to you guys.
But that debt service will start in the next fiscal year budget? So we'll have an opportunity to-
We'll be able to plan on it and-
Prayer, yeah, be ready for it, okay.
And, you know, Kyle with Davenport, you know, was like, he said if you really start breaking it down, he said, it's probably not going to cost, long-term, not going to cost the town much more money to go with a private bank, because it's a shorter-term loan. He said, and you're going to get an answer and get shovels in the ground a lot faster.
What was the USDA rate about? Do you know?
It was at four point two five percent, but Tobias was pretty sure that it was going to go up July first.
So we're expecting that a private one would be six and a half?
Six point two five is the one we've already gotten.
Okay.
And it may be a little higher, a little lower, you never know.
Okay, I just, thank you for, I know those aren't exact numbers, but it's helpful.
So, yeah, so yesterday and today, about eighty percent of my day has been dealing with this, this police station funding, because we want to get this started. Everybody in town wants to get this started, and we need to get this started, because there's other things we've got to do as well, so.
That's my concern, is how this will affect our other long-term plans.
I mean, since, I mean, so in my opinion, and I'm not basing it on anything but my opinion, I think the fact that we have a year to plan for it, it shouldn't affect us a whole lot. I think we're in better financial situation now than we were six months ago, when Davenport did their little proposal to us and financial plan to us six months ago. I think we'll get a better plan now than we got six months ago.
Well, and something that we've talked about a lot is the need for better facilities, to offer better services, you know, we're, I just don't want to interrupt that terribly.
And I know those are really important to you personally.
Yes.
And so I trust that you wouldn't lead us down a path to risk those.
No, I mean-
We just, we got to figure it out.
And it's one of those things that, you know, I want to say this the right way, because we have backed out on some stuff in the past. To me, it would be not very, I don't know, studious financially to back out now, because we're in it, we're in it. Let's finish the job.
Yep.
That's where I'm at.
And we're growing, we have to.
I mean, we, we've all, we all know, everybody knows, that the town's growing like crazy, but our facilities have been passed by, and we've got to, the police, the police station's not the only thing that needs to be updated, and we realize that, and that is the plan, is to move forward with not just the police station, but with more than that, so. But we've got to get this going first, so we know the actual cost and what our debt service is going to be, so we can plan for the other ones.
Yeah, I'm ready to sign that loan paper.
The ask of us tonight is to move away from USDA funding and seek bids for a private bank funding.
Give me the approval to send Davenport and Associates to get some bids from private bank funding, and basically, we put USDA on the shelf for another time.
Any other questions?
I'm good, yes.
I mean, I'm ready to build a police station.
Yes.
I make a motion that we go ahead and give you the authority to move forward.
All right. All those in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous.
Thank you, guys.
All right, I'll ask because I ask every time, and I'm not going to stop. Are there any members of the staff who would like to present a report to us tonight? Okay, otherwise, their reports are in the agenda, each department. Uh, it's a good it's a good read, good stay on top of stuff. They don't want to come up and talk, and that's fine. Uh, but I'm going to do like birthdays and stuff because that's fun. So staff birthdays for June. Officer Arnold, Andrew Police Department. Wesley Fox from Water and Sewer Department. Shannon Hodges from Inspections. Sergeant Pollard, Andrew Police. Feliciano Ratnazar in the Finance Department. Officer Reagan, Andrew Police Department. Staff anniversaries, so people who were hired in this month. Kirk Brown, Water Sewer, six years. Wesley Fox, Water and Sewer for one year. Officer Manlanjeet, and if I pronounce that wrong, I am so sorry. Uh, has been with Andrew Police Department for nine years. Uh, Jerry Sutton, Inspections Department for a year. And Captain Adams, Andrew Police, eight years. Um, I want to take a moment. We had a Memorial Day event about a week ago and thank the people who were a part of that. Uh, Bianca Rose Orsini, Mr. Don Bennett, Nick Granger, Kayden Kellerman, and the members of our VFW. A special thanks also to Julian Knowles and Kevin Hall, both formerly of the Community Development Board that organized this event uh for everybody and Andrew Police Department. I believe they did our flag operations on that day for us. Uh, events coming up. June fifth, this Thursday, there's another concert at the Depot, six thirty, Janice and the Crew. June seventh, the Andrew Black River Fire Department is having their a hundred years of service celebration. Uh, it'll be at the fire department from eleven to four, and I think they're going to have food trucks and all kinds of fun stuff, right? They're going to let us spray the hoses and. And we could jump off the building. You got a big inflatable thing? Well, anyway, probably tell me it's going to be a good time. So check that out. That's this Saturday, June seventh. Uh, June thirteenth, there's a ribbon cutting for Whiskers and Tails Mobile Grooming. That will happen at noon in the Town Hall parking lot. Uh, June nineteenth, another concert at the Depot, six thirty PM, The Embers featuring Craig Woolard, and that is beach music, I think, so if you're into that. Uh, and then I have our special call meeting for June twenty fourth on here, but now I think we probably don't need to do that, and that makes me wonder, do we need to make some kind of motion to cancel that one?
Didn't we have two items?
Well, we had the budget and the USDA. Neither of which.
We don't need the budget one because we adopted it. No, no.
Now, so Dan, the question for is for you, do we need an official action to cancel that meeting?
I move to formally cancel the special called meeting for Tuesday, June twenty fourth.
Sounds good to me. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Great. Uh, that's that's what I had. That was the last event, and now it's gone, so.
Bob, I'd like to make a a shout out to um our facilities and events coordinator. She's not here tonight. I had a customer in a neighboring community specifically come to me last week and tell me that they came to the food truck rodeo on the seventeenth and had an absolute wonderful time.
Yeah.
And that they will be joining the Town of Anger and doing events here with their family rather than their own community. So it was a shout out to them for putting on such a good presentation.
Perfect. That's exactly the point of it. And I believe that we got an increased budget for events in the budget we passed, too, so hopefully more of the same or better. Um, are there any other commissioners who have anything to add tonight?
I just wanted to share that uh last week I was nominated by my peers on the Central Pines Regional Council to serve on the Executive Committee for them. Um, and I'm really excited about that opportunity, so.
Congratulations. When do you when do you find out?
It's they accepted it Wednesday.
Well, that's important.
Yeah.
Okay.
Official.
All right. No other business that I have, so I will entertain a motion to leave open session, and then afterwards, we will convene in closed session. Is there a motion? If we're gonna add stuff to it, uh, we should probably add property acquisition, too.
Uh, make a motion we go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty three dash three eighteen to discuss personnel, property acquisition, and attorney client.
All of them. All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. That is unanimous. We are closed. I'll give you guys.